Anyway, let's move on. M2. Motion approving interim agreement with the boring company for the subsurface tunnel system from downtown Fort Lauderdale to Fort Lauderdale Beach. Do I hear a motion?
Are we discussing it? Are we going to, we have to move it before we discuss it?
Or a presentation?
Oh, yeah. I mean...
Well, let's put it, let's put it on the floor. Do I hear a motion to approve the interim agreement?
Can we do it that way? Don't discuss it first. I'll move it.
Okay. Do I hear a second and then we'll have discussion?
I guess we need a second to...
Well, Robert's rule says you... Yeah, 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 yeah. Exactly.
Just a second. I'll move it in a second.
Second, second.
We moved the second. Now for discussion. Is there anyone here, city manager or city staff, who want to talk about?
Oh, without the full, I got you. Yeah.
Or Alan, do you want to talk about what the interim agreement represents?
Yeah, I don't know that we have staff to speak about it.
I think this is a legal thing, so let's just hear from our city.
Well, it is, although Mr. LaGleboum did engage in some of the negotiations. But it's essentially an interim agreement with regards to some essential testing, geotechnical testing. There's design work, as indicated in the interim agreement. The only caveat, which is different than any other interim agreement essentially that we've had before, is that if you look at Exhibit B, there are certain milestone payments that have to be made. This is done regardless of whether we enter into a comprehensive agreement or not. Typically, as we did with the Aquatic Center, there were some not-to-exceed amounts. If we were to, say, walk away and the deal didn't come through, then we would reimburse them for certain amounts of money that they expended in getting to that point. Here, regardless of whether we enter into a comprehensive agreement or not, we are going to be paying milestone payments. There's four milestones. The first is a completion of alternative analysis, which is explained therein, for $50,000. The completion of geotechnical report, that's $225,000. Then there's a completion of a 30%, civil and architectural design drawings for tunnels and stations, that's $100,000. And the completion of cost estimate, which is at $0, but that's essentially, they're going to be coming up, doing the testing and coming up with some numbers for us, because right now we've been presented with our potential ranges. So we'll have more definite numbers coming from it. Again, it's, it's, it's a straightforward interim agreement in the sense that we're giving you permission to go through and, and do this pre-development work and to do the testing. However, the only caveat, as I said before, different than the other interim agreements you've entered into, is that you're going to have an initial payout as we go before we even probably get to an interim agreement, a comprehensive agreement.
So the purpose of the interim agreement is essentially to move the project forward and to be able to firm up the, 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 the cost of it, as well as the, what's the word I'm thinking of? The feasibility of it, in terms of geological research, in terms of trying to find the correct pathway from beginning to end, where the, where the terminuses would be and so forth. That's basically what the interim...
So it'll take up a step further to possibly 30%, where you're going to have more of a definitive, you're going to have a definitive route in, in point A to point B.
Right.
So it, it is going to do that. Again, nothing, nothing spectacular about it. It's just that we are going to burden the risk and pay for this regardless of what occurs.
Chris is here also to give a further explanation as to what the import of the interim agreement is about.
Yes. So good evening. So I heard a little bit of that discussion as I was coming downstairs from upstairs. This interim agreement allows us to continue to do work, and it allows us, it allows the boring company to do certain things to continue to assess what is subsurface. So at the end of this work, we should be able to answer a couple of different questions. We should be able to know a definitive path for the, the route, and we should also know a guaranteed maximum price. So in order to get to those two things, this is the work that's required between now and getting to those answers. There are certain milestones in this interim agreement. It's a little bit different than what we negotiated when we were dealing with the, with the Aquatic Center, with the Hall of Fame, where we basically had language there that said we consented to certain work being done. And if they, for no fault of their own, all of a sudden we tell them we just don't want the project anymore, and it wasn't because they did anything, then we had some caps put in the interim agreement so that we would reimburse and, and make sure that they were somewhat made whole, whole for the work that they did that we chose not to move forward on.
So why is that different now?
This is different in that there's milestones, because this is what they're comfortable with, that as the work is done, the payments are made as milestone payments. And so there's not the, there's, this is different, and I just need you all to know that it's different, that if we were to walk away at some point in the future for no fault of their own, or even if they were to walk away in the future and say the project is not doable, this interim agreement, I believe, commits us to these milestone payments for work that is, for actual work that was done up to the maximum cap.
Wouldn't it be better, though, that we did this just like we did it with the Swimming Hall of Fame in the interim agreement? And then when time came, if we did get to a comprehensive agreement with the boring company, these costs would just then be factored into whatever it is they're charging us for the project. And by that time, we would know if we were able to identify funding sources. But I don't know why we need to say yes to these payments upfront as opposed to on the back end, when we actually know that we're going forward with the project.
So it's, it's all a function of transfer of risk, right? So in this model, all of the risk is transferred to us. In the model that we did with the Aquatic Center, that risk transferred to us if we made a decision to say we don't want to go forward with the project. So it's, there is more risk transferred to us in this interim agreement than there was in that prior, prior project.
And I did, I did raise the issue with counsel and with Mr. Thompson, Thompson as well, just what you stated, that it'd be on the back end. So if we do get into a comprehensive agreement, it'll just be, you know, part of the cost of the project, and that's not something they wanted to entertain.
Why?
That's just not what they want to do.
Well, essentially, we're engaging them to build this project. And so as they incur expenses, they want to know that, that their expenses are going to be covered. But there's a cap to them, right?
There is.
So it's not...
There is a cap. And I guess the question becomes that this work needs to be done before those two questions I mentioned can be answered, which is what's the exact path and what does it cost? And I think that they want, they, they want, and we certainly could take back to them the idea that we treat it more like the Aquatic Center. And, you know, we could push pause on this item tonight and with your direction, take that back to them and see if we could bring it more in that, in that fashion at our next meeting. Or if you're comfortable that, that there's enough, there's enough control here that we don't have any more risk than what is defined by those caps, and you're comfortable with that, we can move forward tonight.
Can I ask a question for clarification? So we're talking about the Aquatic Center. We are, we paid for 100% of the Aquatic Center, correct?
I'm talking about Ishaaf.
Which one are we talking about? P3?
Yeah, we're talking about the East and West Buildings, the International Swimming Hall of Fame, not the Aquatic.
Sorry, not the locker room.
Two new buildings.
Yeah, so they're paying for that. They're paying for the East to West. But I think with the...
They are, but in the interim agreement, not, because we haven't reached a comprehensive agreement yet. So in the interim agreement, it's built in that the work they're doing now, if for some reason the city decides, so you know what, never mind, then we're going to owe them a certain amount of money or not-to-exceed amount, and that's built into the interim agreement with the, I'll say Aquatic Center, but it's really the East-West Building. That is a little different here, because regardless of whether anybody walks away, or if they do, we, we, we pay this upfront.
Sure. Well, I think this is just shedding a little bit of light on who may be paying for the tunnel, because the East-West, they're paying for 100%, but we are partnering with them. So if we pull out, we have to pay them for the work that they're incurring. But we don't really know who's paying for the tunnel yet. So they're asking us to pay for all of this. As a partner, we haven't decided what the, what the financial split's going to be, which was a little bit clearer when we were talking about the East-West, right? We saw the financial end, and so we really don't know that yet, because we don't know how much it costs and the funding sources and everything, so...
Yeah, the funding strategy with this project will be completely different than the East-West model as well.
Correct.
When we get to the comprehensive agreement. I don't want to necessarily draw that comparison, but you're correct that there's, you know, there's, there's more of an opportunity for us to pay in this interim agreement than in that one. In that one, if it goes, if the project goes forward, it's just, it can all get bundled up.
Right, and they pay for all of it. We're just, we just give them the land. So I, I think we may have to make a little bit of an investment, and part of this investment is to explore how we fund it. And then, you know, maybe we just have to have a deeper dive when we get to the comprehensive agreement, and if we will move forward at that point. But right now, I think there are so many variables that will cost a lot to discover that I guess they're asking us to, to fund it. So do we want to move forward as a partner with funding this exploration phase?
Well, is it prudent to, to just say yes right now to the $375,000 when we don't really even have before us any kind of model at all in terms of what are our funding options going forward? I mean, are we just, in other words, are we just going forward in the dark and not really?
Well, it's sort of a, yeah, sort of a chicken and an egg. And the, in order to put a funding strategy in place, we need to know what we are trying to fund. And we can't get to that number or even know what that fund is until we do this work. So it's, is the right order to make the investment in this subterranean investigation so that we can answer those questions and then put a funding strategy in place, knowing what target we're trying to hit? Because the funding strategy of a $60 million project is probably very different than the funding strategy of a $100 million project.
Here's, here's an idea is, they've got four milestones in Exhibit B. The first is completion of alternatives analysis, which is $50,000. I'm just interested is maybe going, one possibility, going back to them and saying, could we look at just funding milestone number one first in a partnership and kind of seeing what that gets us before we start talking about $375,000? Could this be done incrementally?
Yeah, I guess the question I would have for them is, is, are the milestones linear or are they in parallel? And if they're, if they do all four of those things, they might be doing all four of those things at the same time.
Yep.
We could ask if there's a possibility to do them in a linear way, so that we get to milestone one before we embark upon milestone two.
Yep.
I just don't know the answer to that.
However, until you complete these, you're not going to have the type of answers you're going to want for us to build upon for a comprehensive agreement. I think it's going to take all four of these in order to move on to the next step.
To do it together. Well, what, what they, Mayor, what they also, in my conversation with them, is they indicated that the cost is greater than $375,000. So they were making the, they were trying to make the point that, hey, the boring company is investing more than just $375,000.
Well, that's the point.
And I said... Right. And I said, well, how much, how much more is it? And then get an answer. They, they didn't have that number. So that, I think it's, it warrants maybe us going back to them from...
I think that...
I don't feel comfortable.
Well, considering, I, I hear everyone's concerns, and they're all, they all have merit. And the thing is that, you know, we're investing in this project, and, you know, we've made a decision, the majority of us have made a decision that, you know, this is going to be an important technological advance technique and try to divert traffic off of our streets. We have to, we don't know what we don't know yet. And that's what this interim agreement is about, is to tell us what, what's underground, what's going to be the pathway to get from point A to point B, and how much is, and to estimate how much is going to cost to complete the project. I thought $375,000 was kind of low, considering the amount of, of time and effort and ingenuity that's going to go into this study, because it isn't a linear thing. It's, they're parallel studies, and, and they're, and one will depend on the other. They're, doing the geological analysis is going to trigger the analysis for the, for the cost, the cost estimates. We can't do cost estimates until we know what the, what the, the construction costs are going to be. So...
Absolutely.
I, I just thought that 375 was kind of on the low side, and I do believe that they're not giving you us, giving us another estimate as to what the high side is, because they don't know what the high side is. It could be twice that or three times that. These things are expensive to, to analyze. So I just think that they want, they want skin in the game from the city, and they want to make sure that we're serious, and they want to make sure that, you know, we're committed. And I think that, that, that's what this offer is about. They want, they want the city to show that they're committed, and they're, and they're going to continue to be committed themselves by, by subsidizing this effort going forward. So I think that's the context we should think about it.
Well, we do a lot of master plans and studies that cost probably a similar amount when we study everything we study. But Chris, is this funded somewhere?
It's, in order for it to come to the agenda tonight, it had to be funded. So it's, it's on the budget amendment that is on your agenda tonight with...
Already approved?
With an appropriation. If the budget amendment is already approved, which I believe it has, so, but that's just as an allocation of funding.
Yeah, sure.
You know, I couldn't get it past the auditor and, and get it to an agenda if I didn't have identified funding source. So that's, that's neither here nor there, and shouldn't influence your decision on this item.
No, well, because we don't have the money.
And to the mayor's point, there's no doubt that 375 is probably low and/or a risk number in regards to the potential costs it may, because they don't know what, to make it simple, when they start digging, they're not going to know what they're going to do.
And that's what I'm saying.
It, it could be more expensive than this, so they're going to take that risk, right?
It's going to be more expensive.
I just don't, we just don't have an actual number, because as you said, they probably, they don't have a number as to what the high end may be on it, so that...
So I think, I think they're taking the risk, if you ask me. I mean, they're just showing that they want, they just want skin in the game from the city. But, you know, as these things go, you know, and looking at public works projects, they're the ones taking the risk, because we capped our expense at a certain amount, and they're going to, they're going to suffer the expense, anything over that. So it's like taking a case on a contingency fee. You don't know whether you're going to settle the case in two weeks or two years. And, and that's just, you know, so, I mean, I would, I would recommend supporting the, the, the comprehensive, excuse me, the interim agreement, and that takes us to our next step. And I think it's an exciting point. It's really exciting. We're moving forward on this, and I think we're going to see some good things as a result of it.
Mayor, I also had a question about some other issues, and I, you have some folks that have signed up, right? Because some questions came up at my pre-agenda meeting last evening, so I'm hoping we'll hear from the public as well. One of them also was some of the levels of the, the insurance liability. Some of those amounts seem kind of low, and...
Well, as we do in some projects, so it, they, they have a million dollars general liability, which was fine. We ran it through our insurance folks. We actually had a meeting with, you know...
You know the thing!
Insurance folks, and they were fine with it for, for this interim agreement, for the type of work that's going to be done. There's no construction work. There's no, you know, most of the geotechnical, although it sounds dramatic, it's really pretty simple in, not simple in scientifically, but from a physical standpoint. It, it's not, we're not digging up streets. We're not doing that type of major work. So from an insurance standpoint, it's, it's fine. And then we, we also built in a transfer of insurance to their contractors. So if they use a particular contractor to do certain work, that insurance requirement transfers over to the contractor. We've done that in some other instances. I think we've done that with, with War Memorial, and I think we did it with Inter Miami as well. Obviously, insurance is going to be a different issue when we get to the comprehensive agreement with more substantial work. But for purposes of the interim agreement, the, we, we cover the insurance aspect.
And Chris, do we have a ballpark figure on what we think this entire cost will be from the downtown to Los Olas?
Well, in the unsolicited proposal, it published a range, and I'm going off of memory here, but I want to say that range is in the 60 to 90 million dollar range. I'd have to pull it and look at it. But it's, it's in the, it's in the upper 100 million, but not all the way to 100 million.
Okay. And have we started to contemplate funding sources for a $100 million project?
We have. And we've contemplated, you know, looking at it from a transportation perspective and how it increases transportation capacity, and whether or not there's a good surtax argument there, whether or not there would be some other transportation-type funding that we would look at, at state and federal level, as well as some local commitment and some local funds. So there's even opportunity for some revenue offset. So we've looked at a assortment of different ways. There's not going to be one way that you just say, this is the fund that pays for this project. But when you put all of those together and, you know, even had a discussion back a while ago with the governor's office about some discretionary funds that Governor DeSantis has that would be interested potentially in looking at a project like this, because it would be a first for Florida. There was even some, there was some interest there, too. Once we get that number, it's just going to be leveraging the relationships to put together a funding plan and strategy that makes sense, that taps multiple sources.
Okay, thank you.
All right, a few people have signed up to speak. John Roth, followed by Nancy Thomas, followed by Michael Ray, followed by Ray McElroy. Would you like to come up to the podium, please? John Roth. Hello, John.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name is John Roth. I live at 333 Sunset Drive. I've been involved in tunneling all my professional life. My main business was supplying the electricity to make the tunnel machines operate, both in, I'm from Pittsburgh, so I know a lot about coal mines. That's one of the reasons I moved here. And I worked in Sao Paulo, Brazil, Rio de Janeiro, Brazil, and Caracas, Venezuela, for subway tunnels done by foreign entities. Anyway, guys and gals, I really don't think you understand the dimension of this proposal and project. It's way bigger than the wave project, much more expensive and more complicated. You know, there were only three test borings that were done for the wave? Three! In Miami, they had to do a test boring every 35 feet on a grid the width of two tunnels all the way out to the islands. And they found as a result, it cost them two extra years with the results of those geotechnical borings, and it cost 25% more to do the project. But they had to do the project, and they went to a P3 for that, and the funds were available, because they had to move the containers to, to, to think. That's what paid for their project. Here, I've looked at this, this preliminary agreement. I pulled one summary from a news, from a professional magazine, which I will distribute to you afterwards, and it has a pretty good summary of where they think we are here. There's three key, there's, you're asked to, to spend money, that they're going to be making money from us? Come on! I've put power plants in. I haven't got a dime from the customer to do all the test borings and analysis of the bridges and everything upfront.
Come on, man!
We had to do it, and if we've had a good deal, they paid us. So that's where I go from. We need a full-depth ridership study to guarantee sufficient-paying passenger fare so that the project will meet an unknown, yet financial, objective.
Wrong!
Includes expected life expectancy of the installed tunnels. That's a big deal. Stations and other equipment, which will incur maintenance costs. Technical issues, the use of high-strength water-resistant concrete, which boring companies never use, is a big deal.
Wrong!
This eliminates the saltwater issues, but it costs a lot more money. More muck to transport, more dewatering, more truckloads, a bigger tunneling machine. How about a stronger foundation for the tunneling machine? A new, stronger robot to install the heavier tunnel, tunnel lining pieces? And the list goes on and on and on, down the length of my arm.
Wrong!
Boring company has never done a deep underwater tunneling project. Secondly...
Can I, can I interrupt you?
Yeah.
That is totally incorrect.
What's the deepest tunnel that they've done?
The, the, if you were to go to Las Vegas...
The what?
If you were to go to Las Vegas...
Yes.
The project that they have done there, and that's operational, is all entirely underwater.
Yes, but it's not 60 or 100 feet underwater.
Well, we're not talking that deep either here.
Well, you're going to have to go under the intercoastal waterway.
How deep do you think the intercoastal is?
Well, it's not how deep the bottom of the intercoastal is. It's how much cover you have to put over the top of the tunnel in order to prevent dredges and boats and everything from destroying the, the structures of the tunnel.
So, so is the tunnel on federal highways 60 feet down?
That's a different type of tunnel.
It's a river.
It's not a bored tunnel. It's a, it's an armored tunnel. That they, it was an open cut. And they, I just looked at the, at the pictures at the Historical Society. They put pilings on and made a big concrete cocoon.
Right. But I think if...
And which reinforced concrete.
I think as you know more and more, as you learn more and more about their technique, and I invite you to go to Las Vegas, they, they have one...
Mayor, with all due respect...
Okay.
When they opened the tunnel, they were having the mining convention in the convention center.
Okay.
Just on the way. Caterpillar, who I worked for, has the largest display in the mining center.
Right.
I asked some of my buddies, who I retired, but I knew them, I said, "Geddon and Ride, give me your opinion of this new tunnel."
Uh-huh.
They did. I said, "What did you learn?" They said, "Ho-hum. There's no new technology there. Maybe if he ever gets the self-driving cars, but we, we, Caterpillar has 1,000 self-driving 400-ton dump trucks in Australia."
Uh-huh.
So that technology is well-known, but they're not using it on their cars. So they can buy that off the shelf.
Wrong!
Why didn't, aren't they using it? So they said, I said, "Where are they saving the money?" And they said, "Well, you know, there is a 12-foot diameter hole for the Tesla car." I said, "What's the deal?" And they said, "There's a huge difference in the amount of material you have to move, because you're using the Tesla car."
Absolutely.
Any downsides? I said, "Yeah, it's so tight in there. There's only 17 inches between the car and the concrete wall."
Right. You haven't said one thing that made it infeasible. You're just describing the tunnel.
Well, I don't know what the, what the police and fire people would like to say about any standard...
He's totally false.
...of evacuating people out of a fire in the tunnel or a flood, if 17 inches of clearance on each side of the car. According to what I read and what the videos from, from Las Vegas are, that's all the space you got.
Except you have another tunnel right next to it, which is the evacuation tunnel.
There's usually a third tunnel in the middle in any of these things. They don't have that.
No, but there's, there's a second tunnel, which is the evacuation tunnel.
This is something that most people, I would not go in that tunnel personally.
Stop whining.
And I think most investors who are investing in something for the public would probably not want to invest in something that's really on their very edge of safety.
Except in Las Vegas, they're building a 28-mile underground system.
They haven't built anything and haven't signed a contract. It's all under, under delay. I don't know why.
They've, they've built several miles. I mean, I've been in it in Vegas. It's...
I don't know where you're getting, John, I don't know where you're getting your information.
Okay, hold on. No, no.
Just look on the internet. They haven't built any new...
I, I...
No, they have, John. I've been in it. I've been in it. Yeah, it's, I don't know how many miles they're at, Mayor, but they've, they've built several miles.
That goes under the convention center.
It goes from the airport to the convention center.
That's dotted line. They have no digging there.
They have no what?
No digging.
How do you build a tunnel without digging?
Well, the McCarran Airport is a future extension.
Wrong! Well, all I know is that I rode in the tunnel, and I rode in a Tesla, and I rode, and, and it was a wonderful experience, and I'm not the only one that did it. And I invite you to do it, because your naysaying is based on information that is really not firsthand. You did not experience, you did not experience it.
This is a huge industry. And when you talk to the guys who are in this business, they say, there's nothing special about their tunneling machine, except for 12 inches.
Which is great. So we're using existing technology that's proven by the scientific community, and they're prepared to, to build this tunnel at 10 to 15 million dollars a mile. You know, you've got to understand that just because you think that, talking to your buddies, it means that they're not doing anything novel. It doesn't mean that it's still not available for us to benefit from.
You have to, to build this under saltwater. What would they say about building concrete under saltwater? You know, when you build, when you build concrete under saltwater, you have to make the concrete much thicker.
Or wrap it.
Saltwater goes in and attacks the rebars.
Or wrap it.
Exactly. So that either makes the internal diameter smaller or the external diameter bigger.
That's what the feasibility study is about. We're here to figure out how to do that.
Okay. I wanted to make the point that I have a lot of experience in geotechnical studies.
Come on, man!
What would happen, ask the attorney and the insurance people, what would happen if something happened while they were drilling, and they went down and made a mistake in their calculation of location, and drilled a hole, 6-inch hole through the middle of our new sewer pipe?
That's a first.
That we just put under the new river.
Well, you know, there are a lot of what-ifs in life.
And Mayor, Mayor, these are, these are all egress. These are, these are all issues we're going to address with the comprehensive agreement. This interim agreement is just for testing.
It's going to be in the interim and the insurance folks, because I was in a case where we drilled right through the middle of the main telephone... right through the middle of the main telephone cable between Washington, D.C. and Chicago, and it was out of service for six months. And that cost more than a million bucks.
Okay. All right, thank you, John.
Mayor, for the record, I want to say one thing. You said that their technology, what's different about it? I, I do believe what's different about their boring machine is it excavates and lays concrete at the same time, and I think that is a technology that is different.
All boring machines do the same thing.
This is totally false.
And then you also said about the driverless technology. I believe they do have the driverless technology. I believe it's the people who don't have the will to get into a driverless vehicle. So, I believe that technology also exists.
Well...
And we're not, and we're not even, we're not drilling right now.
Yeah, I just wanted to, for the record...
The fundamental issue is when you get out at the other end, you go to visit someplace in the convention center, right?
Well, that's one stop. And then future stops will be at casinos or the downtown.
Okay, so they're, they're negotiating to put all around the town and all that.
Right, 28 miles.
They're negotiating how much it costs to build each station, which they're proposing to charge to the hotels.
Allow me to prove you wrong.
It's a lot of money, guys.
It's $20 million, $20 million per station.
$20 million per station, right. So, I asked the elbow room how much they want for their stations, for example. I think, I think that...
I don't know what you're talking about, the elbow room.
I know enough about this. Every time, as an activist, I talk to people, I say, "What about the tunnel to the beach?" And they said, "Isn't that dead?"
Okay. Thank you, John. We appreciate your input.
And Mayor, just so you know, that with regards to that additional 20 mile, 28-mile stretch, we have the benefit of counsel that we've hired that are actually working on that as well. So, whatever they learn from there, we're gonna have the benefit of...
Right, okay.
Mayor, I think they've told us, here it would be 50 or 60 feet deep, is what, is my understanding.
I don't recall that, but you could be right.
Yeah, that's, that's what, that's what my understanding is.
I don't recall that. I recall 50, 60 feet for the train tunnel.
Yeah, no.
That I recall, but not for the Tesla tunnel.
Yeah, that's what I've heard.
Nancy Thomas, followed by Michael Ray, followed by Ray McElroy.
Good evening. Um, this all sounds very exciting. I'm certainly not against new ideas if it benefits the citizens of this city.
That's a first.
But I have some reasons I'd like to present to you to hold off on approving the interim agreement with the Boring Company for the proposed tunnel to the beach until adequate public input is obtained. How, these are the questions. How has the need for this project been justified other than a general expectation of relieving quote-unquote "gridlock" from downtown to the beach? How has the gridlock been measured? And how specifically will this project resolve it for up to $100 million? Have other relevant transportation entities, MPO, FDOT, Broward County, been involved in determining the need and benefit? And how would it be integrated with other city traffic relief options? What's the long-term view? The public has only received information via the media. There have been no other efforts to present the project to us in an organized way, à la charrettes, which we've done in the past, that would permit adequate feedback. The public will pay and, will pay for and be affected by this project. So, they should be included in the concept before any more city funds are appropriated. The city already committed half a million dollars for legal consultation. The interim agreement requires another $375,000. When combined with other staff costs associated with exploring it, we're getting close to $1 million of taxpayer money without any organized opportunity for public input. Indeed, this should have been done before the city accepted the proposal last year. Finally, three of you will not be commissioners much longer. In terms of making such an important and costly decision, why not wait until new commissioners are representing the public?
Come on, man!
There's no rush to move on at this time. Maybe the public will like the idea, maybe they won't. But that's our money, and we should be given the opportunity to understand its ramifications before the city enters into an interim agreement. Please do the right thing by your constituency. Obtain proper public input before moving forward.
Okay, Nancy, I agree with you 100%. The problem with doing charrettes and all that is that we do not have the basic information. Until we have the basic information, we, you know, at a charrette, I've been to a few, and I know you have, we go to, and I do public presentations, I've done a number of them over the many years I've been on this commission, and people ask a lot of questions. We don't have the answers yet. And the only way to get the answers is to enter into the interim agreement so we can further study the project and understand what the facts and figures are. We would be kidding ourselves if we thought we could engage in such charrette or such public output until we had that information. Trust me, as soon as we get the, the information, I'm gonna be the first one out there, going neighborhood to neighborhood, trying to talk about it, get the feedback, see what the feasibility is, see what the expense is. You know, this whole idea of trying to create alternative means of transportation in our city because we have a traffic problem. It's the number-one issue that every survey brings back to us. And the number-one hotspot that we have in the city is 17th Street Causeway and La Solas Boulevard. We can't touch 17th Street Causeway because it's not our street, but we can work with La Solas Boulevard. How many charrettes have we had, Commissioner Glassman, on 7, on La Solas Boulevard? Commissioner Sorensen and Commissioner Glassman have studied that, that road ad nauseam. They've had many, many neighborhood meetings, and the one thing that everyone has agreed on is that these roadways cannot accommodate the existing flow of traffic. We have to come up with an alternative.
With, with all due respect, Mayor...
Yes, Mayor.
It comes across in all the articles written since last June, when you got the unsolicited proposal...
Right.
That this is a great idea, and we're going forward. And it, it comes across that way. And I know a lot of people, I'm a regular old citizen, and I too have questions. I, I don't understand frankly, like, what analysis was done for something like this, even without details? How will that relieve the so-called congestion on, on that east-west route? What, what's the criteria? What's, where's the cost-benefit analysis? You have enough information, it seems, about the technology, and it's, in general, you don't have all the fine-tuned answers for this location, but you have a lot of information, and you have a pretty good idea of cost. So, why not, why, why throw some more money after this if it's not really necessary? And with three new commissioners coming in, I think that's an issue also. Personally, I and anybody I've spoken to have, they're like, "Where did this come from?" You know, like, they want answers. They want more information that they can give.
And they, and they're, and they're fully entitled to it. And this commission is committed to making sure that no project is going to be given a green light until the community is well-versed in all the facts and figures as what it's gonna take to move this thing forward. I think that we're all frustrated with the amount of popularity we have. We're a popular place now, right? We continue to be popular. Commissioner Glassman sent me a newspaper article from 1985 or 1987, I can't remember, in which the number-one problem in Fort Lauderdale in 1987 was traffic. So...
It's pretty much true of most major metropolitan areas.
Well, but, but they're using...
Not like, you know...
Let's, let's think outside the box, Nancy. All right. Hey, trust me, we're trying to work with the community, but we can't, we would be fooling ourselves, like I said, if we thought we could make a public presentation without our knowing all the facts and figures. We all have been out to Las Vegas to see firsthand what the final product looks like, and it's very convincing. I invite everybody to go there. People in our community, I don't want to name names, but there's a lawyer friend of mine who many people know, who went out there for, for a convention, and he came back, he said, "We need this tunnel in Fort Lauderdale." He said, "It's the best, best thing we could possibly do."
Well, the other aspect includes priorities. It may be a great idea, you know, very exciting, you know, put us on the map, but, you know, what about priorities? Where does that $100 million fit in the city's priorities in terms of need? And in terms of traffic management? I didn't really include that, but that's an issue. And again, if, if you're saying by doing the interim agreement, you'll have enough information to go to the public, then I would like to hear you guys, whoever's staying and coming, a commitment to, you know, then you will have answers, then you can answer people's questions without it being, "Well, we've come this far, so we're gonna go the whole way."
No, 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 no.
Without publican...
No, that's not, that's not how we do things here. We need to go baby steps, and this is the first baby step.
Well, it might help if you publicized your, your interest in getting this information and then talking to your constituents. This is our money.
Well, I agree with you. And we, and we, hey, I put out a newsletter, 20,000, 20,000 recipients get it every single month, and multiple newsletters that I have put out have talked only about this. So, there is, there is information being put out there. One cannot rely on the local newspaper alone to getting the facts.
I'm not saying we do. I'm just saying that that's where, and I read a lot of the newsletters from the commission also. But I still don't see, for example, the cost-benefit analysis of an expensive tunnel to resolve the transportation gridlock, so noted, in that stretch. I mean, I'm, I'm an analytical person. I would like to know, how many people are you talking about? You know, how much, what's the cost-benefit?
So, we will get to that point.
I hope so.
I promise you, Nancy.
I hope so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Michael, followed by Ray. Is Ray here tonight? Is Ray McElroy here?
I'm here.
Oh, is, where, where's Michael?
Right here.
Well, how can you be two people?
I'm not, as far as I know.
Okay.
I only signed one form.
Okay.
What is the other one?
One says Ray McElroy.
That's not me.
It's not you? So, when I said Ray McElroy, is he here? You said it's me?
I thought you said Michael Ray.
No, you're Mike, I know who you are. You're Michael Ray.
Yeah, Ray just accosted me in the hallway.
Is May, is Ray, is Ray...
He just accosted me in the hallway by the sidewalk.
You want to go get him? Okay. Okay, Michael, you have three minutes.
We have what?
Three minutes.
Oh, thank you. First of all, you don't need any agreement, because $16, 100 million would go much better to buses, trains, trams.
Wrong.
I have left here for your consideration Wikipedia about the Boring Company.
Our four.
There have been several projects of his around the country that have been dropped, canceled, many, because they do not carry enough people. I should say, I feel sort of like my, and other comments here are superfluous, because it seems like a lot of you have already made up your mind. But nevertheless, even though you don't need an agreement, because the project's bad, why should you pay for it? You're dealing with the richest man in the world. He has $218.1 billion.
Right, okay.
That's 1% of the gross domestic product of the United States. He makes $1.4 million in one hour. Why should we spend money to tell him, who if this wonderful visionary project is gonna come to fruition, is gonna make lots of dough out of it, that we need to pay you money so that he can see the quote "skin" in the game?
Son of a bitch!
If you look at this that I have left for your consideration, there are many projects mentioned in there around the country.
Allow me to prove you wrong.
You mentioned you went through the Las Vegas Loop, Mayor Trantallas. I guess you weren't there when the traffic backed up and...
Wrong.
The article says Elon Musk's Vegas Loop called a death trap.
Wrong.
There's just, the public does not want this. The mayor, the mayor's photo is saying, "People come up to me all the time, seeing they're so, so excited about the Boring Company."
Absolutely.
Who are these people? I live in Fort Lauderdale. Everybody, almost everybody I talk to thinks it's ridiculous. They think it's a boondoggle. They think it's another public giveaway. They think nobody's gonna ride. What happens when it breaks down? What happens when there's a storm? What happens when the cars break down? What happens when there's a fire? How are you gonna get a fire engine in a tunnel? For all these reasons, it's just not feasible. You need a new report. First of all, you should pay money to the richest man in the world who's trying to make money off of us, the people in Fort Lauderdale who pay taxes. It's ridiculous. And I would just like to end by saying, if anything, and this fits perfectly, if you vote for this, this commission has tunneled this, which is intended to focus exclusively on a single or limited goal appointed to you.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you. Son of a bitch! Okay, no one else has signed up to speak? Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Where did the Commissioner Soren, Vice Mayor leave?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. So, what's your pleasure?
Just the three of us?
There's three of us.
Oh. Well, I, I believe we've all done our due diligence. I believe we have to come up with some, a different solution. I mean, when we started four years ago, it was no to the wave because we didn't want anything additional on our streets. So, then we started exploring either over or under, and I think we have explored both options, actually. We're looking at those, what are those things called? Like the verta something? I don't know.
All right.
Vertical takeoff.
Vertical takeoffs. The vertical takeoffs, we're talking about that, we're talking about tunnels. So, I, I just think it's time to explore new options in transportation.
Okay. So, you support the interim?
I do support it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor, correct? Okay. Do you have anything further you want to add?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. And I, first of all, I appreciate all the information we heard tonight from the public, and I, I do say to you, I agree with you that before we can go to the public with charrettes and workshops, we just have to have some information. I have a lot of questions about this, but I am willing to take just the first step on the interim agreement, because I do think I need to have those answers. And at the same time, I'm really hoping that staff brings us forth when this comprehensive agreement comes, with all of the funding options, all of the avenues that we're able to pursue, because I think that's gonna be key to this. For me, this is not just about downtown to the beach tunnel. To me, if this really works, and we see that the numbers are proving out, and by the way, I've heard, and I've spoken to folks in Las Vegas, and the numbers are increasing really nicely there in terms of people that are using the system. But for me, this has always been about, if it's successful, and we see that it is alleviating traffic, and we see that people are, are doing this, I, I think that we need to look at a much bigger picture, because this, for me, is a test. It's not enough to go from downtown Bright Line to La Solas and Neywinay. We need to connect the airport to the seaport. We need to connect to the downtown from there. We need to possibly do Sunrise Boulevard, which is a nightmare many parts of the day. And then even maybe go out north to Lockarp. So, for me, this is really just the first step to see if it's feasible, to see if we're able to put financing together without being a burden on the taxpayer, and to see if we are able to get to that first step. So, I have many, many reservations, but I am willing to take this first step because I do believe that it's worth that investment. I'm not happy that we are taking the risk, but I do understand at the same time that the 375 is probably not gonna be the total cost of those four milestones. So, I'm realistic enough to know that. Would I, would I have preferred that this was structured like we did with the International Swimming Hall of Fame, East and West Buildings? Of course I would, where we say, "Look, if it's our fault and we pull out, okay, we'll pay for those milestones." But it looks like we're not gonna get past that, or it looks like we were unable to negotiate that at this point in time. So, I, I am gonna support this, but I, I need to see so much more going forward before